Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for July 6th, 2021. I call this meeting to order, and again, please ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
President.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Rinkie?
President.
Jawansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have on our committee meeting this evening is in the Community and Economic Development. Chairman Gansey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the one item, and Trackside Diner is looking for a BETA grant to add outdoor seating, about 16 spots, eight tables, and it would be a grant of $2,000. Are there any questions?
Any additional questions or comments?
No, I think everything we're doing to help our restaurants in the village is worthwhile. I wouldn't have any objection to this whatsoever.
From what I heard, outdoor dining has been something everyone's looking for.
It's great that they can use it. So we're going to go straight to the village board next meeting for approval on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And that is all for Community and Economic Development. Thank you, Chairman Gansey. Next item we have is building and zoning. Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda tonight, and then the grant plan. We've had a scene before, but we can do it along the way. So this is the, coming back to you from the Plan Commission meeting. It's your second time reviewing it. Again, it's rezoning of 192 acres. It's a preliminary subdivision PUD of the property with 81 traditional single-family located here, 60 active adult ranch homes, and then 90 active adult duplexes. There would also be 116 townhomes proposed north of the railroad tracks, commercial at the Hard Corner here, and then in open space wetland area on the northeast corner of 59 and West Bartlett. They're asking for special use permits for the PUD and the wetland mitigation, a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use plan. The Plan Commission reviewed the requests and conducted the public hearing at their meeting on June 10th, 2021. The commissioners expressed concerns with the size of the commercial site, the lack of an emergency exit for the townhomes in Phase 2, reduced lot size for the active adult community, and the five-foot side yard setbacks for the active adult community. The Plan Commission did, however, recommend approval, subject to the conditions and findings of fact outlined by the staff, with the additional condition that the light poles at the subdivision entrances and in the commercial site match those in the West Bartlett Road corridor plan. Also attached to your report tonight is the draft development agreement. Staff and the petitioners can answer any questions that you may have on either one of those.
Questions from the committee?
I would like to address some of the concerns that the Plan Commission had. What was the, how do we resolve the, what was the thought about the size of the commercial site? How many acres do we currently have?
There are six acres.
Well, when I looked at that, I'm thinking to myself, six acres, that's large enough to put a commercial area. What?
There are, the usable portion is about four acres.
All right.
That's, that's what was said. So they had concerns with the size. They felt it was a little small.
How does staff feel about that?
We're recommending approval.
Yeah, all right.
I would agree a little bit with the Plan Commission, just because it's such a valuable corner. The more potential commercial that we can get in that particular corner, we're running out of space, usable space on 59, right, or anywhere near there. So that would be my only concern. I would be curious as to what the commercial uses would be on four acres.
We have a concept plan.
Oh, yeah.
Here's the concept plan. They're showing, and again, very conceptual. So about 35,000 square foot grocer and a 2,500 square foot restaurant.
Yeah.
If we were looking for more commercial, where would it come from there?
Out to that main drive that goes in. Now, they'd have to remove some of the residential, the duplexes. That's what I originally had thought that this was going to come back at, I guess, was, I originally thought, were those duplexes always there?
Yes.
In their original context? I guess I thought that there were more, is there space on the other side of 59 for commercial?
That's the wetland area, open space.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I can respond.
Yeah.
My name is, you may recall, my name is Dan Olson with Crown Community Development. I'm head up the engineering and construction department. With me tonight is Chris Nats, heads up our sales and marketing department, our attorney, John Mays, Golden Ratner, planner, Rich, Rich and Vince Moska with Hay and Associates, our environmental consultants. The commercial, we, you know, as you know, this property's been in the village for, since 1963. We've owned it for a decade. We've been marketing almost a third of the site as commercial for that entire decade aggressively. We tried, we thought we had Walmart at one point. We thought we had a bunch of other big boxes. Big box, big boxes went away. They're not building big boxes anymore. And then e-commerce, obviously, has changed the retail market substantially. So the other issue here is Cook County property taxes. And, you know, every, all of the retail users that we solicited, they all told us that we can go down the street and pay less, less in taxes. So all of those factors convinced us that we needed to shrink that commercial a bit, and that's how we ended up with the, with the six acres that we have today.
I thought, that's what I thought originally, that it was a little bit larger than that when we were first talking about it. Is the backside the only, I guess, what is it called? No maintenance type area? Just that back area?
Yeah, it's common maintenance. Those are duplexes.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's a common maintenance area, as is the active adult area that Roberta's pointing to right now. Those are ranch homes. That'll be common maintenance as well. The only area that will not be common maintenance is the south of there, which is the single family detached, which is your traditional single-family home.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with lot sizes when it comes to the, when it comes to the people that don't want a lot. You know, they, they want a ranch house with little maintenance, zero, done. But yeah, I totally understand what you're saying about the commercial as well. Be nice to look at big boxes, but big boxes aren't looking anywhere.
No. E-commerce has changed everything, and it just continues to, I was a late adapter, but I, that's, I buy all my stuff online now. You know, retail and commercial is more profitable for us. We would much rather see a large, much commercial there. It just...
Now, that road that comes out, Roberta, does that go, it connects with the other side of the street, what's the name of the other side of the street road? Other side of West Bartlett?
Cheviot.
Cheviot?
Yeah.
So that's like two down from Victory Center?
Correct. We, that, the main entrance into the residential is across from Cheviot. The main entrance into the commercial is across from the retirement there. And then we also are proposing a right-in, right-out off of Route 59.
Okay.
Into that area. We, in our discussions with both IDOT and in Cook County, they're favorable to it, but they have not yet responded to our report.
And they're letting that in spring of 2022, I hear?
The intersection improvements are, I believe, November of this year. Is that right?
November?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay.
So it looks like, conceptually, like a grocery store. I guess one question, what, what grocery stores, and then two, what's like Plan B if no grocery stores?
So we, that is what we think is a good fit there. We currently are, we have no, no interest in the property. We are continuing to look, but we think that'd be a great fit there, particularly with the rooftops behind it. A lot of those types of uses don't show up until the rooftops get there, so we're hopeful with that. But right now, we're not getting a lot of, a lot of interest in the commercial. We're hopeful that'll change.
Presidents that back up to the commercial, are they being made aware ahead of time that it is a commercial lot?
Certainly.
Potential uses that they can back up to?
Yeah. We are, we are proposing a fence to, to separate between the residential and the commercial, but yes, they'll, they'll certainly be aware that they are buying next to commercial.
What would be the separation?
Separation between the commercial. So we are, it's a, we have a landscape buffer back there. I'm not sure, Rich, how, what the width of it is.
Because we had talked about six acres.
It'll be both landscape, and there will be a fence there. There's also a pretty significant grade elevation difference there, so.
We had talked about six acres, and Roberta's talking about four being usable. I was wondering if part of that would be a separation between the commercial?
Some of it will be, but it's not the separation that we have along West Bartlett Road, obviously. That would take up too much property, so we're trying to limit what that separation is.
So we're saying four acres would be able to be developed with parking in it. It's 175,000 square feet, give or take. I mean, we could put a lot of commercial on there, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I think with the plan we're showing right now, I believe it's like 38, 38,000, or I believe it's, what the, 38?
I don't want to put you on the spot, but with IDOT's improvements, they're going to have to, we're going to have to raise that corner, right? They're going to have to raise the elevation of that corner somewhat.
Yes, so.
Going to straighten the corner out, I think, a little bit?
IDOT has purchased-
Thinking about traffic movement through there now.
Correct. So IDOT has purchased property from us to, to make the improvements a number of years ago.
Good.
So what they're doing, if you haven't seen the plan, duals in all directions, right turn lanes in all directions, you know, two threes in all directions. That's about as, as big of an intersection as you can get. It should greatly decrease the, the traffic issues that are going there. But they will have to build up that area. So, but it's, it's up right now. Our commercial, we're in, in the last stage of the final engineering right now. Our commercial will have to come up a bit as well, but it won't be up as high as, as the intersection will.
Yeah.
So if this were to be approved, how soon would you be selling houses?
So we're not actually developing or, or building the homes. We are, we are the property owner, we are land developers, but in this instance, our obligation to our buyer, which is Polte Homes, they will, is to get it through entitlement. And we'll be involved, obviously, all the way through it, but they'll be developing it and they'll be building the homes. Our hope is that we can get the entitlements complete yet this year so that they can start land development this year and get the underground in through the winter and then roads next year. And if you know anything about Polte, and I know you do, they don't like to have lots sitting on the ground very long, and they, they'll start building immediately, get the models up and start building homes.
My only concern is the national bike path under Route 59.
Right.
My concern, I've worked on trying to connect our bike path and make them more user-friendly. And this is one key area where we're putting a development up. A lot of people in this development will be traveling to the downtown area and back and forth. Some of them will be children. So I don't want to wait four years to see an underpass approved. So I particularly am not fond of the language that was spelled out in negotiating. I don't particularly care for it. But one thing I think we should add to that is not one residential permit should be approved until the bike path is complete. And whether, I don't mind if the village pays a little bit of money. I mean, everyone's going to be using this path. But having a developer behind it and improving it and making it work is key to this development. I think this is...
We, we share your, your interest in getting the bike path completed as quickly as possible. The only problem with waiting to, to issue the permits until the bike path is complete is the jurisdictions that are beyond our control. You know, IDOT, it takes a while to get through IDOT. This is, they, I'm guessing they have other priorities and a bike path crossing under, under that dislocation. You know, one priority being the, the intersection improvements are right, you know, just down the road a bit. So we, we will act aggressively. We are committed to starting the design for it, which is within six months of getting approval. We'll, we'll start the design well before that, but having it complete within six months. And that'll open up the opportunities for grants, potentially, you know, to, to help pay for that, that improvement. But also get, you know, get it before IDOT as quickly as you can so that they can, can give us the thumbs up or thumbs down on it. We've had initial conversations with IDOT already about the possibility of this, and they gave, they, they were favorable to it, but they're not going to commit to anything until they see plans. So it starts with the plans. But I, I will say, to wait until, to issue building permits, until that improvement is complete, when it's beyond our control, when we'll get the permit, that won't work with Polte. And I hope you can appreciate that, because, you know, they need to move and they need to...
They're, they're much, wow, if IDOT does come and say, oh, you know what, we don't like this, you know, then where are we at? You know, we get 35,000 dollars from you? I mean, we wait 10 years to build an overpass or something else? I mean, so I think, I think, I don't know if staff can work on some language with them, maybe meet some certain milestones or get some sort of assurance from IDOT, you know, before this kind of comes back before the board. I mean, I, I'm thankful for this plan and we chose Bartlett to develop this land. I just, this is key for me, anyway. I don't know how anyone else feels about it.
I don't think we're going to get any assurance from IDOT other than what we already have, which is, which is, you know, looks good, until they get a, a plan in front of them. So that's what it's going to take, and getting going on that is going to be key. You know, as, as you recall, you know, we, you know, I think, you know, when we first met with you, there was discussions about the crossing, right? And we worked very closely with staff to, you know, identify the best way to cross. We looked at tunneling. The grades didn't work for that. It's a very expensive venture. We looked at, you know, potentially going over with a bridge. Problem with that, it's, it's also a very expensive venture, but it also eats up a lot of land, primarily the commercial land. But in addition to that, commercial buyers don't like bridges obstructing their view. So we, we don't think that's a good idea as developers. You know, we think the, the plan that we presented to you is the best idea, and we think it, there's a good likelihood it's going to happen. But if it doesn't, we don't get the permit, I think we're back to an at-grade crossing that exists there right now.
I don't like negotiating from the dais, but I think that the direction, I agree with Trustee Hopkins, and I think, you know, what I'd like to convey to the staff is if there's a way we can, we can expedite this and not wait up to five years. I understand the complication of the issues, but if anything we can do to shorten that up, I think that'd be a good thing.
Roberta?
Yeah, I think it's obvious that the whole board is, kind of makes that a priority when it comes to this corner. It would be a huge addition, so.
It's a priority for us as well.
Yeah, good. It's the quality of life out there will be really well improved, so.
Absolutely.
I have some questions.
Sure.
How do we address the, the, I'm sorry, why then her?
Sorry. The planning meeting, it was, it was presented, they were looking for a stoplight, or they were questioning a stoplight on West Bartlett Road, because this is going to add quite a bit of traffic coming in and out of the subdivision, and apparently that, it wasn't warranted.
It is not warranted, yeah. The traffic report shows that it's not warranted. Your traffic consultant agrees that it is not warranted. The state of Illinois will not grant you a traffic signal unless it is warranted. There's also spacing requirements there. You don't want to put too many stoplights too close. Obviously, there's one at Naperville Road, there's one at Route 59, so that's an issue as well. But it's, it doesn't meet the warrants, so even if we wanted to do it, they, we couldn't do it unless we got those warrants.
Okay. I mean, I don't know the, the distance, but, you know, there's one at Sterns, there's one at Apple Tree, Apple, Apple Valley, there's one at Struckman. Those are fairly close together. But then I guess once this gets built out and purchased, then another traffic study could be completed?
I would hope, yeah. I think we'll, if it, if it is bad, we'll have people in here, obviously, and, and we'll hear about it.
The other main concern I heard was the emergency access to the townhomes.
Yeah, it was, you know, we struggled with that. You know, you could see we're, we're landlocked up there with the railroad, the wetland, and then the townhomes to the north, and that's why we located the main entrance as far north as we can. With the turn lanes and whatnot, it can't get too close to the railroad tracks. But we support the Plan Commission's recommendation to, to do an emergency access there, as long as Cook County will allow us to do that. We've done them before. You can handle a few from here with Grass Creek, and then you can, you know, other, other forms of access. So we're looking into that, and that'll be showing up. That'll be, as part of our final engineering plan, there'll be some access.
Okay. Because I think they had asked, Roberta, if the fire department had looked at this, or had they approved it, I think. And your response was that they'd looked at it. So could you provide a little more detail as to what their input was after they looked at it?
They still have not approved it at this time, but we're tweaking a few minor changes with that, and, but it had nothing to do with the emergency access. It was more the location of a townhome building and the turning radius.
Coldestack, that was it?
Yeah, okay.
Could they look at that emergency access also at the same time?
Oh, sure, sure.
I think the boulevard approach seems to make the most sense in terms of, you know, with some alternative access.
We've done that, where, you know, and what we've heard from, from the chiefs in other communities, you know, the eventuality, I mean, if, if you got an accident that's blocking the entrance and there's a fire simultaneously, how do they get in? The boulevard, some communities will, will agree to a boulevard, you know, where at least there's always one, one access in. And that's something that we're, we're also considering. You know, I would say it's either that or, or an emergency access around the south side of that pond. But that gets pretty close to the railroad tracks, is our concern. So we'll work with staff on that.
I just wanted to ask, can you hear my gun? Just have a couple of concerns regarding your site layout. And one, I just want to tell you that I'm excited to see development happen. As somebody who lives at this intersection, and it is a busy intersection, I think it's a great development. I also share the same concerns that the Plan Commission had regarding the commercial space. And so I just want to question your layout real quick and see why you designed something. At the bottom, next to Phase 1 retail or commercial land, you have a horseshoe drive there with six or seven houses laid out there. If that, if those houses were laid out along that main road, you'd still get six or seven houses along there, and we'd be able to increase our potential commercial use there. Because I know that as somebody who travels westbound on West Bartlett Road every day, that a need for a drive-through coffee, whether it be Cook County or DuPage, would be extremely well-used at that, well-served at that intersection, and would only take a smaller parcel of land to complement a grocery store or a potential user in addition to that. So I'm just asking, what was the reasoning behind the horseshoe drive, and is it possible to increase our commercial space by basically moving all those houses up to the main road?
Rich Olson responded.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. My name is Rich Olson. Gary, our Weber associates, we did the site plan. One of the things that we had to consider is, of course, the, which is a minor consideration, but the entrance into a community with an access to a commercial is not quite as desirable from the residential standpoint. But of course, that's not the whole story. One of the things that, and we sort of talked about the size of this commercial at the corner, one of the things that we're battling, and I think you've probably been out there, or if you've all been to that site, you'll notice that there's a high grade that are uphill, and it goes straight down to the bottom. So we're fighting, the residential is going to be up high, and the commercial's going to be down low. And so we have grade transitions that we're trying to meet from a, from a high-to-low standpoint. And that's a transitional grade area that, that would probably be much more difficult to achieve. But we could, you know, at the end of the day, we could look at it again. But that's the reasoning behind that from a grading standpoint.
You're saying is you could possibly put those six along the main road that's inside and not have the horseshoe, and then just create some type of, some type of a retaining wall or something like that? Adjustment, adjust it down to the lower grade?
Yeah, I've, I've met a lot of engineers. They'll tell you every time that they can always make something work if you put enough money into it.
I, I think, I think I agree with, yeah, with Trustee Gunstein, that I think that would make a little bit more sense if we could eke out a little bit more commercial, because we heard that earlier. So, I mean, I don't think it's a make or break for me, but I think it'd be interesting to see if you can try it.
One of the other things that we, and we looked at a bunch of different, and certainly tried to increase commercial. One of the things we looked at there is, there's a natural feature in the center of the site. If you look at the plan, you'll see sort of an outline of it. That sets our northern boundary, and as you come across that all the way down, it sort of pinches at the, the entrance area. You can kind of see as the, the first road as you come off of the entrance starts to curve in towards the, so you kind of get one of those where it starts to narrow down, and commercial wants to be a certain depth. So there's some, there's a lot of factors that are kind of pinned against us at that corner from that standpoint.
You get brownie points if you see what you can do on them.
Yeah, just one, you know, final comment on that. There, you know, there is a concern about usable commercial space too, right? You know, the area, it does pinch, pinch down there. We did look at, we would lose lots, right, if we did, if we got rid of that, that cul- the U-shaped cul-de-sac there. But I think it's more the bigger issue is, you know, as you, is because of the road trajectory there, you do lose, it becomes tighter as you really can't get a building in there. The best you could do is parking, and you don't want parking too far away from the, where the buildings would be.
Even if you put one, two, three on the inside loop, got rid of the horseshoe, and then put two or three this way, you could still push that wa- that, that potential commercial site farther to the west. So you could, one, two, three along the, get rid of the horseshoe, push one, two, or three sites on the top, and then one, one or two along the entrance.
Yeah, we don't have any, any direct access to the entrances, to the entrance, first of all, because it's a boulevard, right? So that makes it difficult to maneuver that. But we certainly don't want to put driveways at, right at the main entrance there, where you got the vehicles coming in off of West Bartlett Road into the community, and all of a sudden you have somebody backing out of their garage there. So we try to keep the, all of the driveways off of those main roads into the community.
Roberta, do you have a, do you have a topo that you can show us?
I do not.
Okay. I'd be interested to see that, if we, if we have something like that, or it's probably a little early, but.
I could send one to you.
Yeah.
Is there space on the, the west side of Lot 166 off of Street B for one?
I don't know which, which, which lot is that?
It's that empty space right up there, yeah.
Lot 198, right there?
No. If there was space there, we'd put a lot there. That is-
What I'm looking at doesn't show any.
No. Yeah, the reason there's nothing there is because that is, that's part of the park that we're offering to the district.
Okay.
Our district, but also that's a wetland finger there that we, we try to stay out of. We are impacting a, a minor finger of that wetland just to the east, but we try to reduce our impacts as much as we can.
And just, I had a second comment that I wanted to make. The cost to do the underpass bridge, has that been defined by an engineer, and how did we derive of the contribution amount?
It was us. And so we talked to a number of engineers, and unfortunately, we didn't have enough information to give any of them to get a good accurate estimate. But we think the most, the best estimate that we got was $150,000. We also talked to IDOT about the potential, the ability to get grants through them or others, because with your complete streets, I know your own, the person who handles your grants in the village feels there's, there's an opportunity to get grants there as well. So the idea is to have, you know, get some grants for that, and then the village and ourselves would share in the local portion of that, which is how we came up with that.
As a 70,000?
Yeah.
And if it comes in at 300,000, who, who pays the difference?
We, we had to put a cap on it, you know, as far as, we think, we think 150 is accurate, but we won't know until it's designed, until we get estimates on it, or bids on it. But we had to put a cap on it for our client. I think we couldn't just say, whatever it's going to be, it's going to be, right? And that's why also in the development agreement, we have, if it does get too cost prohibitive, if the village still chooses, there is the fallback option of that at-grade crossing.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm not in favor of holding up a permit, okay, because you guys have to get construction started. You got building material costs that are constantly moving. I get that. I, I look at this as something maybe we should look at, a bond or an escrow to put this money aside until we have a hard number.
So I think the development agreement does require us to bond for, for the $35,000 that we've committed to that improvement.
Is that just the underpass portion, not like through that, the wetlands, or the...
That would just, so, yeah, that would just be the underpass. So within the, within the right-of-way of, of Route 59. Everything else would be constructed by and at the cost of the developer.
And that's not far enough away from the commercial lot to look at an overpass? And that's not far enough away from the commercial lot to look at an overpass?
Right there, the, an overpass won't work there, it'll, it, because the, the grades are already going up the bridge for the, over the railroad track, the, there's just no way you would be able to get, to get, you know, uh, an overpass above that and, and still have the ability to get, you know, by a five percent grade to get up there.
Couldn't it be moved one way, I mean, couldn't it be moved, or does it have to be on that line?
Unfortunately, uh, well, fortunately, that finger of, along the railroad tracks that there are property, is our property, um, and, you know, and then obviously we own the parcel to, on the, on the east side, but just south of there, that's an outlot that we do not own, so there's no opportunity to move it one way or the other.
I think the developer, that the best method is the underpass next to the railroad tracks, and I'm confident, and, well, I'm not too confident, but I'm confident that the developer, by what he mentioned tonight, is going to do his best effort to make that work, so, um, I just hope maybe the language in that contract is.
Sure.
Boarded up a little bit, and.
We're fairly confident as well, uh, you know, we, you know, it, we proposed it, right, you know, when we're looking at different options, like, here's an idea, right, let's try this, and then, I'd never seen it actually done before, and then, uh, I believe it was Roberta or Paula Staff found it, it's up the street at, at Route Twenty, right? And, uh, and they did it, right, so that gave me a lot of confidence, that in our conversations with, with, uh, IDOT, that, yeah, we can do this. IDOT is, is absolutely a hundred percent on board with complete streets and having, you know, these pathway systems completed.
Send this onto the village board for a vote, then, if there's no objection?
I have one more question, I, I know I read in there that it said that construction traffic has, has to go left onto Naperville Road instead of right when it's exiting, how about entering? How will it enter?
So we, we're, we're well aware of the issues on Naperville Road, um, that exist now, before we've done anything here, right? You know, a, a lot of that has to do with the intersection that's failing at Route Fifty-Nine, right, so we're, we're, we're confident that, you know, once IDOT completes that intersect, those intersection improvements, that that'll mitigate a lot of that traffic going north, they're still going to go north, right? Um, we can't control traffic, it's hard to control traffic going out, trying to control traffic coming in is even more difficult, but what we, we will do, certainly, or I should say Polte will do, will certainly, um, talk to the contractors to make sure that they understand the rules. Uh, what we have committed to do is, about all we can do is place a sign, no, coming out of our subdivision, coming out of the subdivision, no, no right turn north, you know, construct, for construction traffic, you have to go south, that's going to be hard to enforce anyway, we may need the village's help with that, you know, at its finest, perhaps?
Yeah.
But, uh, it's, it's really difficult, right, to, to control those, those, especially, you know, if it's the first time a vendor's been to the site, or contractor's been to the site, to control them coming from the north, but we'll do our best, I can commit to that.
All right, we'll forward this onto the village board for a final vote.
Thank you so much.
That's all we have on our building zoning.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins, thank you guys for being here, and thank you all for being here, it was really helpful for us, appreciate it. That all entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the sale of village-owned property pursuant to Section Two C Six of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Second.
Given by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Gansy, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gansy?
Yes.
Ganstine?
Yes.